Welcome to the regular town council meeting of Cave Creek, Arizona, Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. At this point, we will be called to order and do the roll call.
Councilmember Augerton.
Here.
Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elkema.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes. Vice Mayor Ray.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Present. The Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Soller, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Just go ahead and say it.
Okay.
I'll do it. If you say the word I, we all follow.
I. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No. You're good. Public announcements on Thursday of this week at 10 o'clock, we're having a merchants meeting with merchants in the town. Invitations have gone out widely, including flyers and other things. Teresa's handled that. And the main purpose of that is to talk about some of the issues in town, to invite participation in the rodeo and the visitor center, and also to invite an organized engagement with town on town issues. And so that will be Thursday at 10 o'clock. The other public announcement that I have is I met with the sheriff's captain last week for quite some time. And I'm sure that will show up on an agenda item at some point. At this point, does anyone else have announcements for the public?
I'd like to say something 11 years ago today. I participated in an E session and then came in here and excused myself from the meeting because my first granddaughter was born here in town. And I just wanted to say that it's her 11th birthday.
Oh, happy birthday to her.
Happy about that.
I've never known her to be such a sensitive guy.
You know, it comes out every now and then.
Okay, next we have called the public and I've been working on a, oh, there it is. There's my. I've been searching for my write-up, my homework. Anyone wishing to speak may do so during this time of the meeting. All you have to do is fill out a card and give it to the clerk, who's Teresa. There is a three-minute time limit on issues for call to the public. The council can direct staff to investigate based on what we hear, but council cannot respond. Counsel cannot actually address any items that are brought up unless it is something directly personal. And this is all according to state law. We have no choice in how that particular part of the meeting works. That's because by state law, any items that are discussed must be agendized and advertised with the exception of this call to the public that is also written in state law. So with that, we will do call to the public. I know we have at least one.
Gail Soller.
Mr. Soller.
Okay. Claire. I will tell you a little background on me.
Would you pull that microphone down just a little bit?
Yeah, I just didn't get out of prison. Okay. Now, I'm a retired rancher from South Dakota. I've ranched all my life, 53 years. And I worked 53 years to get them ranches paid for. I had ranches in Montana, Wyoming, and South Dakota. We run over 3,000 cows. And my main business, we owned livestock. I own livestock auction markets across them states. We average over 600,000 head of cattle through my markets on an average per year. I'm 85 years old. I retired three years ago. And I couldn't wait to get up in the morning and go do my thing. Now, I love what I done. So that's a little bit of background. The most thing I'm proud of is this. When we had our big retirement batch, after I sold all the ranches, the livestock markets, all works, we had a big celebration. And all I talked about was my employees. Out of 186 employees that I had, 80% of those were with me from 26 to 46 years. I'm more proud of that than anything that I've done in my life. Now, I helped them, but they made me, period, period. Now, I am here to talk about the city ordinance. I'm used to a lot of noise. And I think you can tell by the description I give you of my business. Now, this is not about motorcycle noise that I dislike, period. I'm a great fan of the rule of law, period. Now, I'd looked at the city ordinance. I'm not going to go through that, but I've got a copy of it. And it will be a great education for everybody in this room to know what that ordinance says. I'm not going to get into that, but I've got some copies. All this is is about the rule of law. Okay. I have found out through life that lawyers and judges, they don't make the law. They are to uphold the law. Congress makes the law in big government. Now, I'm a guy that does his homework before he takes a test. And it's worked all my life. My college professor told me that when I was a freshman, I never forgot it. Now, I have the main thing I'm here, there's new technology out for noise decibels. And if if there is an ordinance that isn't followed, then you got to change it. Now, the law does say that, but I don't think anybody wants to change it. Now, it tells all about human health because of loud noises. I've got all this information here from the Mayo Clinic. And it's really worth reading because it will get your attention. Health-wise, period. Now, I have this new technology to where where you have a stop flight or a stop sign or a speeding sign. Okay, this new technology, it don't only say the speeding like what there is signs like that on paved freeway road, but it also keeps track of the decimal reading. And the decimal information is in here. Now, it's science. It isn't some Joe Blow trying to tell you something. It's science. And I don't think Fosse made it. If you know who I've talked about. Okay, now, that's what it boils down to. And I think that if Cave Creek would be one of the first to install this, I think that they'd get more congratulations than anybody could ever think. Now, about a year ago, I talked to the head deputy sheriff's office. And I've got his name and his code number and everything on there, kind of a big wheel. I didn't have to go see him. He come to see me. And we talked about this decimal reading. He said something's got to be done. He said it's ridiculous. I also went to a council meeting in
Carefree.
Carefree. And I gave a little talk there. And there's a big crowd there. I got done talking, I had got a standing ovation talking about decimal reading. Now, everything that I can think of, everything has changed in the last 30 years. And people can get complacent and get allergic to change. Crazy. You know, we need more more togetherness and understand things. Now, I'm not going to say anymore. I'm going to give the mayor a copy of this new technology. And I'm going to get out of your hair. And I can see by looking over at you guys, I can tell everybody sitting there is a professional. Now, I'm a good judge of people. I interviewed person, every employee I ever had in my life. And I think the stats that I give you, well, you will agree that I'm a pretty good judge of people. Now, I love to come to talk to people like you people because you're professionals. And I like that. I like this people that I can learn something from. And I done my damnedest to hire people smarter than myself. And I, it worked out quite a few times. Now, I'm a past national president and international president of the Livestock Marketing Association. And our headquarters is in Kansas City. And I was the head of the banking and risk department for many years. And I got so tired of giving speeches and going every place in the damn country that I couldn't go to a meeting for five years after that, I so burned out. Now, I'm done and I'm going to give.
Mr. Morris. Thank you, Mr. Soller.
Get rid of some junk here that I don't want anybody to hit.
Welcome to Cave Creek.
Okay.
Yeah, if you just hand it to Teresa, we'll distribute it to all the council and the staff.
Now, this is different copies of the new technology. There isn't enough for everybody. I just wanted to help the council. I think there's seven of them, so I think we're okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morris. Thank you very much for your time. And I'll look forward to running on this.
Thank you.
So, pleasure to be here. And I like your smile.
We all do.
It's a good place to be.
I don't want to get out of your hair.
Don't look at me.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. David Phelps for Call of the Public.
Sorry.
David Phelps for Call of the Public.
Baby.
Lots of luck.
How's a guy supposed to follow that? Come on now. I'm here to discuss Senate Bill 1117 or Senate Bill 1117. There's been an attack on the rural way of life in all zoning in Arizona by the legislature this season session. And I've highlighted just a couple of the issues having to do with residential housing design standards, which municipalities of less than 25,000 are not affected. However, when you look at the legislation, the way it's been struck and redone, the only thing keeping us from being affected, other than everybody in Desert Hills being able to apply to this, would be that they would have to take out one to make us part of the soup they want to make. And believe me, this would decimate Arizona. This is the worst assault on private property rights for those of us who made a lifestyle choice to live in an area that is not filled with multifamily projects. Because what Senate Bill 1117 does is it allows any property owner to divide their land in 4,000 square foot lots by right. No rezoning necessary. It's just you show up here and in 30 days, they need an approval. They're allowing at-risk to the landowner the, basically with a preliminary plat approval, which is no longer seen by a board or commission or a legislative body. It's an administrative approval for preliminary plats and final plats. They are able with a preliminary plat to start grading. So this is something that only could be basically thought of in the halls of Arizona. It's basically, they want to take the citizens' rights to our municipal planning and zoning and throw them out the window and give all these by right uses to residential zoning. Basically, our general plan has some guidance to this, but it gives anybody with residential zoning the right to subdivide. In fact, they want to take the definition of subdivision out of state statute. I mean, it's the biggest assault on Arizona that I've ever witnessed. And I'm new here. I've only been here 63 years, but I, 62 years, but things like eliminates the requirement for preliminary and final plats to be approved by a legislative body are critical to who we are. Requires that a municipality procedures for administrative approval for all final plats. And the list goes on and on. I would encourage you to take a look at SB 1117. The reading's dry, but you'll be familiar with it because it goes against everything that we've tried to do in the last 30-plus years here. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
No additions.
There's no town manager.
She is on the line.
Oh, she's on the line. Ms. Town Manager, do you want to say anything with your report or are you just listening?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to add to what the mayor said about Thursday is that staff has sent emails to hundreds of businesses and we will send another email reminder tomorrow. And we do have staff reaching out personally with phone calls to businesses to attend, try to get folks to attend that and make them aware. But I know business owners get, you know, busy and we want to just make sure that that they are aware of the sessions. We're trying to have a really good attendance on Thursday. And then the other thing is it's fast approaching our first brush drop-off in March on the 11th. So we'll be getting the word out through social media and that, but want to make an announcement for folks to start kind of cleaning up their property and putting that together for the first brush drop-off. And that's all I have.
I have a question. Carrie. Carrie, it's Catherine. Is the meeting on Thursday with the business owners open to the public?
It's a public meeting. We have seven council members invited. I'm sure we'll have a quorum and it'll be posted. So it's primarily for the businesses, but it is a public meeting.
And so it will be livestreamed?
Yes, it's in the council chamber, so yes.
Okay, very good.
It will be very difficult, though, to capture everything because there will be, you know, group discussions. It's not structured as a council meeting with everyone sitting by a microphone or at a podium speaking, so. But the initial introduction and some presentation by the rodeo and tourism bureau and any other questions folks may have. But after that, it's really more of a meet and greet.
Well, when Brian has the link created, would you let me know? Thanks.
Yes.
Hi, Carrie, this is Dusty. Are we going to ask the people who attend? Maybe like we talked about in the retreat, ask them what five issues they face that the town could help them on, just as kind of a have them put something down on paper so that we can, we can take a look at it and maybe identify some trends.
Mayor, council member, that's really up to the council. It's structured if there's a wish to do so and to capture that, we could have them write that down, however you'd like to do it.
Well, this was structured by me and I don't think we'll do that. This is an initial, the plan of the meeting is to, as I mentioned earlier, issues to tell them what's issues, that's a tell.
A dialogue.
No, tell.
Okay.
Tell, T E L L, issues like pedestrian safety, some of the things going on in town. Invite participation in the rodeo and the visitors bureau and then invite organized engagement. And then the idea is that we, since there can be so many people there, it's a large meeting is to, as many staff members and councilors that can attend will break up and let let individual members receive feedback and talk to them and see what the issues are. There may be need for more meetings, but this is a kickoff sort of thing. So I don't have the structure to do any kind of facilitated.
No, I wasn't talking about facilitated, just give them a handout and ask them to fill it in or or me email a response back to the town staff so they can take a look at.
Well, they can do that anytime, but the idea here was so the, the real idea here is engagement. We do want to get their ideas and that's one of the purposes is to invite and organize. They're really invisible in town, in my view. And we want them to be engaged, especially on issues that impact their businesses. So. Anyone else?
I have, I have a quick comment too. I had a great time. Well, today, I started maybe 10 o'clock or so and Teresa had made some handouts and I went up and down the street. I don't know how many you gave me, but I got rid of all of them and had a good time doing it. And people are real interested in coming. They're excited about having a conversation with the town and in the town. And then Carrie, I had a question. I noticed I got an announcement from the League of Cities and Towns and they're doing a grant writing workshop, a grant writing kind of how-to. And I'm wondering, do you have anybody going to that or? I know it's out there a little bit, but I'm just kind of wondering.
I received that as well and I just forwarded to a few staff members. I haven't been in the office to speak with them, but we typically try to have at least one person attend.
Great.
They do that every year or so.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie, thank you very much. The next is the consent agenda. Do we have motion to approve the consent agenda?
Bob, if possible, I'd like to pull that. I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. I'm going to vote on yes on this consent agenda, but I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Okay.
You got time for that?
Yep. Yeah, true.
So on January 17th and 18th, the new council met with senior staff in strategic planning.
My lights are generally out. You got it. All right. The agenda meeting minutes before you show the activities we employed, but not the themes that were discussed. This strategic planning effort is not completed. Our meetings were the first step. Each staff member and each councilman member shared their thoughts about what should be considered. These are my personal observations. Staff shared thoughts about their work and how they can reach their goals. Council members offered staff support and shared aspirations for important areas for the town's growth and character. As a group, we discussed issues like trails, dark skies, events, zoning review, issues of managed growth and better communication. These ideas were recorded and will be distilled into a draft for future discussion and decisions about strategic actions and plans. Good things are ahead. Don't believe rumors. And please ask any one of us if you have questions. Thank you.
With that, do you want to make a motion?
I would like to approve the consent agenda. My move that we do.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. The first general agenda item is a presentation of the quarterly financial report placed agenda by the financial director.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Morris and Town Council. Tonight, I will be presenting the second quarter financial report for the current fiscal year 2023. I will start by presenting the financial information for the major general government funds and follow with the financial report for the enterprise funds. The first slide shown here is the town's general fund revenues. And as of December 31st, 2022, the actual revenue collected is $6,803,906, which is 56.1% of the adopted budget. The black line on the graph represents the budget and the blue line represents the actual revenues and is showing the town is tracking slightly above the 50% target halfway through the fiscal year. The second slide here shows the breakdown of the general fund revenues. The town has collected a little over $5 million in local taxes or 55% of budget. Local fees are trending above budget at $653,265 or 68.2% of budget. And state revenues are at 949,502 and are right on track with budget at 50.6%. Miscellaneous revenues of 193,628 are above budget at 84.6% due to insurance recovery monies of $85,575 that were received for weather damage at the rodeo grounds. The bottom pie graph shows 73% of the town's general fund revenues are from local taxes, which are town sales taxes and construction sales taxes. 14% are from state revenue, which is the town's portion of state funding for state income tax, state sales tax and vehicle license tax. And 10% are from local fees, which are the fees the town collects. and vehicle license tax, and 10% are from local fees, which are the fees the town collects for its services. And the remaining 3% in yellow represent the miscellaneous revenues for the town. The next slide shows general fund expenditures through the end of second quarter. The top half of the slide shows operating expenditures to budget by department, and the bottom of the slide shows capital expenditures to budget by department. All general fund departments are trending below budget halfway through the fiscal year. The next slide shows the other major general governmental funds. The town has received $181,716 or 46.8% of state HERF revenues through second quarter, and no expenditures have been made yet year to date. Spurcross has received 818,774 or 53.4% of local taxes through second quarter and expended and has expended 108,000 or 50% of the budget to Maricopa County for administration of the park. Okay, moving from general government to the enterprise funds, the first enterprise fund shown here is the wastewater fund. A year-to-date revenues and operating expenditures are on target halfway through the fiscal year. Revenues collected are $1,465,367 and operating expenditures are $754,579. Capital project expenses for wastewater of $300,167 are slightly under budget at the end of the second quarter. The inlet screen replacement and the headworks and basin repairs projects for the wastewater treatment plant account for the 46 or the 40.6% of the capital projects budget expense through the second quarter.
Ms. Call, would you explain the the revenue number for the new people just, this is their first budget review, I think. But counted as revenue is are some things that aren't that are not coming from the customers, the subsidies that are built into this. Would you go through that? So.
For the wastewater, you mean?
Yes, for wastewater, please. So that that number looks like it's there's there's some subsidies in there that everyone needs to know about.
Okay. It's always water here. Okay, so the wastewater included in the revenues of the $1,465,367 are the half-cent sales tax that goes to the wastewater fund. That's a part of local taxes. And then there's money in there for our wastewater capacity charges. And then we've also got the wastewater user fees, the base fee and and usage charges and admin fee that's in there. And then the charges to that we receive from Rancho Manana for delivery of the affluent water.
So the the big, the the big number in there is going to be the the sales tax.
The sales tax, yes.
And that, which includes food, by the way, which is legislature, another of these legislative bills that that are out there. And that's a million four, you said?
The sales taxes through December 31st, the half-cent sales tax is 818,774.
Okay, so if you double that, we're subsidizing sewer through sales tax by 1.6 million per year.
Correct.
And then in addition to that, you haven't gotten there yet, but we're not covering, we are not covering the capital expenditures, that the capital cost for the loans that we've taken out with them.
Correct.
And and we're also putting general fund money in there, but this is pre the new the new rates. So there is a astounding subsidy going into the wastewater system, and it has been that way forever. I just want to make sure everybody on council.
No, I appreciate.
Starts to get you. Start to put that in their in their thinking.
Yes.
Isn't that our goal to move to the point that it can become self-sustaining, but given the issues of who gets the the service and other issues, it's it's a long-range goal, and we'd like to get there.
Well, the 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 new rates are just going into effect now, so that's gonna.
The first bills are just going, they will be going out at the end of this month.
Yeah, so that that'll hopefully cover that debt portion that's not being covered. But the 1.4 million is in there until probably until 2030, when the loans are paid off.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, this slide shows the financial information for Cave Creek Water. Our revenues collected through the second quarter are $2,853,852 or 59.9% of the revenue budget without the grant revenues or transfers from other funds. Additionally, Cave Creek Water received the state and local fiscal recovery funds from the grant fund in the amount of the $1,949,777. This revenue is now 100% of budget and will be spent on capital expenses related to the Phoenix Interconnect project. All expenses are tracking below budget halfway through the fiscal year for Cave Creek Water with operating expenses at 46.1%. The water meter replacement and plant maintenance capital project expenses underway at the 23.4%. And the Phoenix Interconnect project expenses at 34% of the budget. And the final slide here shows the financial information for Desert Hills Water. Year-to-date revenues through second quarter are $1,676,785 or 48.2% of budget and operating expenses of $935,472 are tracking slightly ahead of budget at 52.4%. Capital expenses for Desert Hills at the end of second quarter are $55,287 or 24.6% of budget and represent expenses for the annual pipeline improvement program project.
The question, I quite another question here. I know on the on the cover letter, page 10 to 136, that that Desert Hills is was tracking on the operating expenses were tracking right together, but that's not covering the debt service. So we're still not covering debt service in Desert Hills.
Debt service has not been reflected in there as of yet because those payments get made at January 1st is the first debt service payment. So that'll get reflected. This goes through December 31st.
So when that is reflected.
So it'll, yeah, there'll be some.
Money in the bank to cover that as of today.
Um, for.
Coming from Desert Hills fees.
Um, you mean to cover Desert Hills debt service expense? Yes, desert sir, debt service will be paid, but January is an interest-only payment, so it's a smaller payment.
Yeah, the the the, I guess the point I'm trying to get at is that since the revenues and the expenses are balanced now, and we've got this big lump sum debt service that has not hit the books yet. If this trend continues, we will not have any funds set aside to cover that that can be attributed to the Desert Hills fees. Thus, the reason for the increase in Desert Hills water fees that are going into effect right now.
Correct. So we'll have six months, hopefully, of the increased revenues and before the big debt service payment hits at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I I have a comment. I I think this this is so much, it's so easy to understand.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations. I really like the way that you've set these up with these graphs and has operating expenses broken out from capital, so we can see what the what we're doing. Nice work.
I appreciate the feedback. So yeah, if anybody else has any other feedback or needs any other details, please let me know.
Let's see. Yeah, what is that acronym? S L F R F?
It's State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. It's public money that was received by cities and towns. It's grant money. It's federal monies administered through the city.
David, there's public comment. Did you want to say anything? The timeline rules are off tonight, so this is your chance. Next, anything else from council on this side before we leave? Number two is a council discussion approval of a contract with VSS International to install a type-three micro-surfacing along Carefree Highway from the west side of Cave Creek Road to the west side of 48th Street for an amount of $279,430, town engineer.
You just heard from our finance director that we hadn't spent any of the HERF money. I'm here to solve that problem for you. Yes, the town received bids for micro-surfacing of Carefree Highway from Cave Creek Road to 48th Street through the intersection of 48th. That's our, that's part of our controlled area. Given that Scottsdale is planning on coming up to Carefree Highway and our water department is going to, and the city of Phoenix is going to be tearing up the intersection. We decided that we weren't going to worry about that area for right now. So we went from the west side of the Cave Cave Creek intersection out to 48th Street with this micro-surfacing. Micro-surfacing is about what we did is the same thing that we did on Carefree, on Cave Creek Road. Only that was a type-two. It wasn't as thick. We're looking at the where that will go on Carefree Highway because of the extra traffic and have decided to go with the higher level. And so we bid out both the type-two and type-three, and we're recommending the type-three be installed. We received four bids ranging for just the type-three from 279,430 to a high of 384,800, and we're recommending VSS International for the 20 for the $279,430. I will answer any questions you might have on the project.
Council, questions?
I heard static, okay?
Have we used them before, and have they provided a good service?
Yes, we have. They did both. They were the low bidders on both sections of Cave of Cave Creek Road. And we feel they did a very good job with that work, and we had no problems with them, and they held to budget and did a good job.
We've got approximately 50 pages of specifications. Now, those are specifications that are generally adhered to within the county or within the state.
That's the, that's a fairly standard contract that we have them that we have them sign. The 50 pages is a contract that we put together. They have signed it in the past. They provide bonding and they provide both performance and payment bonds. So we can, we double protect ourselves that, one, they're going to pay their vendors, and two, that they're going to perform, and we don't have to replace.
Thank you.
I have an unrelated comment. I just wanted to tell you that I got some feedback from you and Tyler going out to talk to the folks off of Morningstar. Several have gone over and taken a look at the at the road going out to Spurcross, and they all seem to be pretty positive about it. So you and Tyler did a great job on that.
Thank you very much. We're getting ready to, Morningstar is falling apart as we speak, and so we're getting ready to go out and do a probably within the next couple of weeks, start that project of putting the material down.
Schoolhouse Road, it was only was done just a few years ago, and it has absolutely fallen to pieces. Spalling, cracks, spider cracks. It is a mess right now and getting worse with every rainstorm.
We have it. We have it scheduled, not in, I think it's not till 25. We will have to go out and do some repairs on Schoolhouse. The problem was it wasn't really a slurry seal. It was a, the town was doing a lot of one-inch overlays. And if you read MAG, the minimum overlay should be two and a half inches. And I don't know why the town was doing one-inch overlays, but that was not something that really should be done if you're going to do a thickness that's required by MAC.
Okay, so we we have corrected the problems that we see with the extremely short lifespan of that particular.
Yes, when we do melt, so the slurry seal, the idea is we're going to come in and do a crack seal. We're going to come in and do before VSS gets out there, the town's gonna, with its own forces, is going to crack seal, which is fill all the cracks in. There are some areas of distressed pavement that we're going to have milled out to three inches deep and replaced. And then VSS will come in and do the slurry seal to seal off any of the moisture that gets into the pavement and causes distress to the pavement. So yes, we are trying to do it in a systematic manner. When we do mill and pays, we typically do a minimum of two and a half inches thickness on mill and pays now, just because we don't want to just put it. We don't want to paint the cracks in the in the facade. We want to do it right so that it'll stay longer.
Other questions? Looking for a motion then?
Motion to approve a contract, VSS International, to install a type-three micro-surfacing along Carefree Highway from the west side of Cave Creek Road, the west side of 48th Street for an amount up to $279,430.
Second. This is financial.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhart?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Agerton?
Aye.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Motion passes 7-0. On to item number three, council discussion approval of resolution R 2023-01, a resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, allowing the town to accept grant funding from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation to be used toward the direct purchase of equipment that would assist with emergency trail incidents for an amount of $28,742.86, placed on the agenda by the Director of Community Risk Reduction.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I still haven't figured out a way to make my title longer, but I'm working on it. What you have before you tonight is a request for an action to approve the resolution 2023-01 that allows us to accept the grant from the Public Safety Foundation, Firehouse Public Safety Foundation. We talked about this a little bit before, but we applied for this grant quite a while ago, actually. Started way back when we had some incidents last fall. And what we've asked for is an off-road utility vehicle with a specialized sled that goes onto it that allows us to put a full-size stretcher on it and allows us to take two personnel, a medic and a non-medic out into any of the preserves trails to retrieve people, so we don't have to fly them out like we did last year. This gets our folks out there faster. It saves our firefighters from having to hike out and then be in condition to treat and hike them back in. This will help us get people on and off the trails much quicker if we run into those situations. So we applied for the grant through the Firehouse Subs Foundation. The original owner of the Firehouse Subs here at the corner of Cave Creek and the south of Carefree Highway supported us tremendously in that, and he has since sold his fond, his stores or his but his interest, yeah. And he has a new owner, and the new owner has also supported us, and so we're very pleased to get this. This is almost at the capacity of the Firehouse Foundation will pay out. The only issue that we ran into a little bit, which I tried to explain, is the foundation will only pay $1,000 towards the construction and the putting together of it. And so if you were to go to. construction and the putting together of it. And so if you were to go to the breakdown of the, the approved bill and right now Power Sports Bill, if you go to that, I highlighted where up at the top, the dealer assembly setup was fifty-six, sixty-four. And the foundation will only pay a thousand dollars for that. It took me quite a while to figure out why they didn't fund the entire amount that I had asked for. I got the foundation and that was the difference. So we will cover that. But all of the other bids and all the other prices are exactly as laid out in the, in the packet for you. The foundation has decided for, they have several ways that they distribute the funds. They are already in the process and we've already talked to them with the financial folks to distribute those funds to us now. And then per the memorandum of understanding that we have and that they've put out nationwide, we will end up giving them back the receipts and right, completing the, the grant once we do all that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can this also be used at the rodeo grounds in case somebody gets injured?
Mayor, Councilman Rhodes, yes, it can be. It can be used for anything that the town wants to use it for. We can use it for bike weeks or future bike weeks or future parades, anything we want to use it for. It's, it's the town's property per the grant, and we can do that. That's correct. That was in a part of the, the application saying we would use it for other town events.
But other questions?
I will make, Mr. Mayor, if I can make one additional comment. This has to be done and completed before the end of the fiscal year. And all parties are very much aware of that. The foundation is aware of that. And the vendors that we've been contacted here and got the bits from is aware of that. So we have to have it done by the end of the fiscal year, before the end of fiscal year.
Okay, looking for motion on this?
I will. This is a motion to approve resolution number R two zero two-three dash oh one, a resolution of the mayor and town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, allowing the town to accept grant funding from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation to be used toward the direct purchase of equipment that would assist with emergency trail incidents for an amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
I want, I want.
Comments, sorry.
Yeah, we have a number of businesses in town who contribute to the town in a variety of ways, the contributing toward the rodeo, and we appreciate all that the businesses have done. And in particular, I think our thanks to Firehouse Subs has to be stated.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I might make one additional comment. When we do receive this equipment, they have sent us a package for a little bit of publicity, and so we will probably do an outreach and get some pictures in the paper and put an official thank you to Firehouse Subs to make sure that that goes out, that we do recognize them.
Good. And thanks to you too.
Yeah.
Other comments?
No, it's something that's needed. It's public safety and all the way around. It's good addition to the community and Firehouse. We thank them for that.
I neglected public comment on this one. Do we have any public comment? You have to come to the mic.
Resident, I would just like to see this used for emergency purposes. I don't think it should be a promo vehicle. I don't think we should have it in parades. Have it on, on the ready. I don't think it should just be something to tool around town. I would really hate to see us starting to widen the trails and spur across to accommodate this vehicle. I understand the emergency aspect of it. But we don't want to start making things. We don't want to adapt our natural areas to accommodate the vehicle when we have other ways to work the emergency. As Jim alluded to, we have airlifts we can do. I understand wanting to take the stress off the guys on the search and rescue. Wheeling them out on the paths or roads that had been pre-established prior to us taking over Spur Cross, but I would not like to see us implementing a widening of the trails just to accommodate this vehicle. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've had the I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just as a follow-up to that. We already had, as we talked about, I think the last council meeting, we've already had a preliminary meeting with the Maricopa County Parks and, and folks, and we told them we were getting this and, and the tunnel for folks. We believe that the primary trails already can handle this. We don't have to, we don't see any need to widen trails, but the primary trails, primary access points into the preserve and into the Maricopa County Park can already do this. And we're having follow-up meetings with the tunnel for us to see how far we can go on their trails. So there's not an awful lot of work that's going to be done. This should be able to be used on what's currently there.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Elkhart?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Agerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. I'm interested in the yeses in the eyes. I think the eyes are so cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda is item number four, council discussion, possible approval of your water service agreement for parcel two eleven dash fifty-two dash zero fourteen G to provide a new single water service in Desert Hills. Utility Director, Mr. Cruzway.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So on your screens is actually an, a sight map of the exhibit in question. It's a five-acre parcel located just north of Carefree Highway between Seventh Street and Tenth Street in, in our Desert Hills service area. We've been working with this developer actually for a number of years. There was a will serve offered to them a number of years ago for up to three water meters. At this point, the property has actually been, they started development about two thousand and eighteen, just about the time I started with the town. Actually, they started the major development. They started on the back half of it. If you've been out to Desert Hills, you know it is Carefree Crossings is the, the storage unit that's on the back half of the property, but they own the entire seventeen point six acres and they're looking to master plan development. As we were developing the town's water resource policy in two thousand and twenty-one, there's a provision put in to allow for us to move ahead and actually as projects were moving through the development process to give them to do a water service agreement in our Desert Hills area. We actually had started the conversations with this developer before that, that water service agreement was put in place by Paul's or by, the policy was put in place by council. So it's taken a long time to get to this point, but before you tonight is the agreement that Bill Sims has been working on with the opposing council for, for a few months now. And what we're trying to do is, is, is give them some validity for their development. The agreement is, again, the entire property was seventeen point eight acres. There's been one water meter issued for the area in yellow, which is the Carefree Crossing storage area. They have a three-quarter inch meter. They're using very little water because it's just their onsite residential use. There was a fire loop that runs through the property. And then as we adopted the council at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, council may recall, we, we offered up a water service agreement to a proposed QT that was going to be at the, the the northeast corner of Seventh Street and Carefree Highway. So that's already in place. That's up to a one-inch meter, one and a half acre feet of water. So what's being proposed with this other agreement for the area in blue for this property, the five-acre property is up to an inch and a half meter, but with a volumetric limit of one and a half acre feet. So the larger meter does allow them a little more flexibility for the instantaneous flow that can run through it. But really, I think what's really benefiting the town is to get the volumetric limit put in place on the agreement. So that, that's sort of in conformance with our water policy. The, the acre and a half acre feet or one and a half acre feet allows them to develop the property somewhat similar to QT or, or to put some other building up there on a five-acre parcel. So the, the other main point in the agreement is that they have up to five years to work with Maricopa County and actually get a building permit for this site. Right now, they have extended the Carefree Crossing storage into a portion of this. But they, they looked at it as a temporary use. It was really to allow for more surface parking. So they still propose to put some sort of building structure on this, on this property. So with that, I can answer any questions or Mr. Sims, I see he's on the line, can answer any questions because he did work quite a long time with the opposing council to get this drafted up.
Questions from council? Mr. Sims, do you wish to opine?
He may have fallen off. He's been having intermittent connectivity issues.
So there's public comment on this? I hope we can use our timer again.
Oh, no.
It's, it's on loan, so we've got to get our
Mr. Sims is on the line. He's muted. If you can unmute him if you have any questions for him.
Bill, do you have anything to add to this?
Okay.
Okay, so we've had council comments, public comment, and our attorney has nothing to say, so we're looking for a motion.
Motion? Motion to approve a water service agreement for parcel two one one dash five two dash zero one four G to provide a new single water service in Desert Hills.
Second.
You have the motion.
I think that we've been working on this for quite a while and I'm glad it's come to fruition.
This is a part of our attempts to deal very carefully with the Desert Hills Water Company. It's outside the town. They do have rights to some of our water. We want to save all the water we can for Cave Creek. They are our customers, so the customers who are out there, we have to service. But we can restrict development out there on the basis of the fact that we just don't have a lot of water. And that was an issue that was a part of these negotiations.
Other comments from council? Seeing no further comments, this is, this is not financial. Voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Presentation of the quarterly utilities report by the utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll wait for Brian to get the presentation up. So obviously part of your package, but to make sure that all the audience members can see it also. So I'm curious to get some feedback by new council members because this is probably the first time you've seen it in depth. It's been part of the package. We've been using this sort of format for probably a good year, year and a half now. We give a lot of credit to Ryan Hill and my staff. He does a great job with pulling these together. We're trying to provide useful information for, for the mayor council and for citizenry to see what's going on in the, the water utility. So our first slide is that we're talking about our CAP, central product water deliveries. And this is really looking at the Cave Creek system and our municipal and industrial supplies. This bar graph is showing the full year since we've now gone through the, the, the full year of two thousand and twenty-two. You can see our major delivery points are to, the orange at the bottom is to our Cave Creek and Carefree customers. The Carefree customers have been dropping off, and I'll talk about that later. The conversion is nearing its completion phase. The red is showing the Desert Hills customers, and then we, we still provide water to the Ranch Minion Golf Course. That's the raw untreated water. I'll point out the little blurb increase you'll see in October. That's actually going back to the fact that we had a thirty-five day billing period in that month, so that did exacerbate the problem. So September was a little bit fewer days. So October extended out. Now it had to come down to reading periods with the staff members. It's getting holiday schedules, et cetera. So again, this is the, the readings that occurred in October, actually, we, we start them in November and they were reported usage in October, but it was a thirty-five day period. So that's why you'll see that little pop up in October, but typically it's more of a, it should be more of a level graph, but this is actually based on the actual consumption data that we have in the system.
Sean?
Yes.
My understanding is that we have twenty-two oh eight acre feet now. This shows that we if I'm reading this correctly, that we delivered to, we required two oh eighty-three, leaving us one twenty-five, yeah?
Well, that, that does not, that's just, you know, twenty-two, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight is our municipal industrial supply. It does not count for the non-Indian agricultural water, three hundred and eighty-six acre feet of non-Indian agricultural water that we're, it's not displayed on that chart. So thinking about that, we might want to rethink this in the future because now that the new rates are in place, we actually have a different rate moving in since the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three that we can charge the, the treat and treatment and delivery of non-Indian agricultural water to Desert Hills customers.
Well, I, I really urge you not to change this because NI water is not in the same as N and I. It is not
Not as secure.
We cannot
Yeah.
go down the path of counting on that for our customers. That's strictly in and out. So the numbers that I last saw, where we had six hundred acre feet of available capacity that
Well, part of this is also in two thousand and twenty-two, we were serving the majority of the Carefree customers. So that's about three hundred acre feet total, once they're off. So the, the bulk of the transfers are actually occurring now. So last year, there was some transfers done, but with smaller neighborhoods. So the, the bulk of the Cave, Carefree customers will come off the system this year.
So you're right. I've got apples and oranges.
Yeah, it's, it's hard because we're, we're a system flux right now.
Okay, thanks.
So this is something we refer to as our, we talk about loss accounted for water. We actually look at it a little bit differently from a regulatory standpoint is it's our non-revenue water. And that's a specific term and some, she, something that we talk to when we, we deal with the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and that's the water we deliver to the system versus what we've actually built to customers. So we've been looking at this and as you can see on the, the non-revenue water percentage is at six point five percent in Cave Creek water system. You'll still see the same jump in October. That was because of the longer period. We can see the green line on the top of the chart is showing the treated water going into the system every month, and then we have our deliveries to our different customer groups, our Cave Creek and Carefree is the orange on the bottom and the red is the Desert Hills tie-in meters. The tie-in meters, if everybody's not aware, is we do have the interconnect site at Twenty-Fourth Street and Cloud Road, which is our way of delivering treated water to help supplement the, the Desert Hills customers. Since their well production has been dropping, so this does not account for also the groundwater. I have a later slide that actually talks about the groundwater. We're able to get out of the aquifer and, and Desert Hills, but this is really talking about our CAP allocations. The next slide is specific to Desert Hills. So this actually does include the wells. So the green in this graph includes the interconnect, so the Carefree, the Cave Creek treated CAP water and the well water that actually supplied to the different customers out there. And the orange bars are actually what we build each month. So in that case, we're, this number, the non-revenue number comes out to just over, over four percent. This next year, we expect that to, to increase in the Cave Creek to decrease for one specific reason. When we built the rates moving forward, we actually put in a treatment and transmission loss number into the water, the, the CAP water that we delivered to Desert Hills. So we're going to shift some of the, the treatment loss burden on the system to Desert Hills, so we'll balance the, the two of them out. So that was something that we did with the rate study, so. Next couple of slides, we'll talk about, you know, how water comes in and out of the treatment plant. It's a complicated little site. Is there a compact site? And if anybody wants to get a tour, we can, we can offer that up. So in desert, in Basin Road in front of the plant, we actually have the sixteen-inch cap pipeline. There's two connections to the plant to that. One goes to the pole filters on the, on the bottom of the page, and the second goes into the West Tech filters inside the buildings. The, the pipeline then continues. It narrows down to an eight-inch line and then continues to the Ranch Minion Golf Course. So we have a valve at the top end and, and a meter that allows us to monitor the flows of raw cap water deliveries. And then onsite, we have a couple of other meters. So we want to do this graphic every time just to explain it to you and sort of reminds myself of where the different water sources are moving at the plant. So as we treat water on the plant right now, when the pole filters aren't able to treat water, we're typically using mostly pole treatment, especially right now with lower flows in the system, and we use the West Texas backup as the system band grows. The proportionality goes more towards a fifty-fifty balance of the site. The, there's a cap, some of the cap water gets diverted because the pole filters actually like a very constant pressure, but a variable flow, and the cap pipeline can't deliver that. So we put some of the water into the reclaimed pit. That reclaimed pit is actually also where the backwash waters, we, we clear the, clean the Trident filter that goes to, and that water ascends to the golf course. So so we provide them either raw cap water or some of our backwash or bypass water from the plant site itself. And we are looking to see if there's a project on the books this year to see if we can help make the poles run a little more efficiently. So this is a number in, in this, I'll play this graphic real quickly because it's can be very confusing. So the, the So the the bar at the top, the blue line, is actually the C A P meter at the cap canal. That is actually showing as reported by C A P, we actually have that meter, and I'm actually talking to Ryan about next time we're actually going to show both that. When C A P actually measures the meter, the water we take out of the cap, now they actually round it to nears acre foot. So if we take out eight point five acre feet, actually, and they show it daily, they'll round it to to eight acre feet. So there is a little bit imbalance there. We do have a project. I don't think we're going to get to it this year to actually replace that meter and the cap pipeline at the at the cap canal. With a what they refer to as a mag meter, which is a more accurate meter. It's just my my honest feeling is is I don't think we can do it until after the interconnect site is done because we're going to have to take the pipeline down and and the risk to something happening to that site. And we're only going to have a very short window of time, less than a day to do that, even in the middle of winter time. So we have an electrical upgrade we need to do and and add that meter down there. So that'll be sort of the final piece, the puzzle of our water accounting to make sure we've got the best metering we can. The meter was down. There was actually installed in two thousand seventeen. It's reporting better than the old meter. But when we add the meters together, you also get inaccuracies, and that's that sort of shows up on this graph because we're 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 different types of meters at different locations. So it looks like we are making water, which in fact we're not. It's just a water accounting here. But the big takeaway is that, yeah, we do. This is trying to show just a graphic for for council to see where the water is being moved in the system.
Sean, I realize you weren't here in twenty thousand seventeen, but replacing a meter after only six years is obviously. What is it about that meter that was made it not the right thing?
It was actually.
How do we get in this position?
The original meter was actually it's it's an insertion meter. It's it used to be a paddle paddle wheel type of meter. So that was actually dates back to the original construction of the pipeline in nineteen ninety. We don't have records of it had been replaced before then, but around twenty seventeen, there was notice given to us by the center as our project staff asking us to do an update to that. The paddle type, which is mechanical, wheel got removed and actually an ultrasonic got placed into it, but it is still an insertion type of meter. So that's where the inaccuracy is coming. The ultimate would be to, again, we have to cut into the sixteen inch pipeline and put it a mag meter in, which means we have to physically take the site out. We have to drain the pipeline, cut into it. It's a very invasive project, but we will get a better metering at that point.
Thanks.
Something, you know, we are in a drought, so something that we take care of or watch for in our system is is where we're using the water for our our municipal operations. We still have to flush the system. We still have hydrants flushing to do. We're trying to get into more directional flushing in the system, which is helpful to the system. And we actually still have leaks, but the one takeaway from this graphic is that, you know, we actually had very few leaks last year, but except for November. And I mentioned at the last meeting to council because it actually just happened at that time. And I'll point out again this time, we had two major breaks, but we've been really watching this and to make sure that our water losses is down. In this case, from the total tap water, cap water treated, the water losses is about only point five percent of the system. So it's something to watch closely. We actually are looking at a different technology for flushing of the system. It's a skid manner trailer unit that allows you to flush between hydrants or blow off, so you don't lose water. It's fairly costly, but it could prove to be beneficial, especially in areas where we don't have good boosting booster pump stations to allow us to really scour the lines clean. So that's something we're looking into. Long term, the town's network and our distribution system has a lot of long dead in lines, a lot of areas with low demand. So I think we'll have to always continue to do flushing operations, which we're very watchful because I know there's a perception to what what it why is the town flushing the system? Why do we have hydrant flushers in the system? But we need to do that for water quality, water age issues. So I mentioned the two, the big white spike that we had in November, and that was on the left hand side was on there's a six inch line on Cave Creek Road. It was a north side of Cave Creek Road, east of Schoolhouse Road. It was a hard line to isolate. While staff were able to get down to it, the the problem we had is the valving in the area was was hard to isolate for us. The second one was on the the south bank of Cave Creek Wash where Cave Creek sort of jogs. It's a six inch line that that continues north across the wash. So yeah, that that broke, and in a matter of a few hours, we lost a couple of million gallons of water. That's how high the pressures are in the system and and in that soil condition, it just it it went very quickly. We were lucky that a contractor was able to help us out. You can see the size of the excavation to get down to that. This is just at the top of the bank, and then it drops down the bank about thirty feet and then crosses the wash, and in the wash itself is about twenty five feet deep. So it's this is a major stress point for me in the system, but it's something that I'll give a lot of credit to the staff for both of these breaks and responding very quickly. For the one, we actually had an outside contractor, Larson Construction, a local vendor, was able to come out and help us out with the excavation because we don't own a track home, so.
Yeah, I I have a question about this. See, that's on the outside of a bend of Cave Creek, so that, am I correct?
Yeah.
So that even though that pipe is buried quite deeply, the amount, the tons of material that come down Cave Creek in major floods can cause major issues. Are there plans to change the positioning of that pipe so that it is less susceptible to?
We haven't. There's actually armoring at that point. We're on the outside of the bend, and they're actually, this is where there are break occurred. I believe it was two thousand fourteen or fifteen. And it took this line out initially. The town did some local repairs, and then we were, you can see just in the bottom of the pipe, there's actually an old abandoned Southwest Gas line that's in there with us. Southwest Gas then came back and and they moved about fifty feet to the east, and they ran a new line or to the west, sorry. Ran a new line down across the wash. We didn't do a parallel at the time. Our thoughts with this line is, you know, it'd be very expensive to replace it in entirety. We're looking at other methods we might be able to do. What happened here is the the pipe got bowed, and then it got to the point that it fractured, and basically we had a longitudinal split that was about twenty two feet long. I mean, or basically the entire length of a stick of a pipe from bell to to spigot end on the entire pipe just snapped. That's why we had such a rush out of water out of the pipe. It was in a tension configuration. There was actually rocks holding it underneath, and the the two ends just started settling and just snapped.
Yeah, there I think there was an issue there of the bedding underneath the pipe. Is that correct? So because that wasn't substantial enough.
That's common. That's very common throughout our entire system. They they we're they would dig a trench, and instead of putting any, what you normally do is you put some engineering materials, maybe or some sand or something to shade it from the trench, and then you start back filling up. They just put the native back in, and or they put the pipe right on the on the on the bottom, so either onto the rocks or the cleechy, etc. And that's our one, I'd say, one of or the largest problem we have in the distribution system. So because that puts long term stress on the pipes. It gives you pressure points, pinpoints, and or in this case, it was a stress in the entire pipe, which is bowed because it was constrained in the center, but the two ends start to settle, so.
Yeah, when was it in two thousand six that we bought the water company for Mr. George? About then, and 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 we knew that there were problems here, and that's what we're finding. It wasn't a surprise that there were some of these issues within the system.
Yeah, it's just how you go and cataloging and capture it. So, you know, I'll give credit to the staff for being very responsive, and especially on this case that, you know. Sadly, we put some the customers. This is a single point of crossing, and I think there's twelve or fourteen customers. And we had to have a out of service overnight because we couldn't, you know, we started the we've we isolated the break. Probably around four or five o'clock in an evening, it just wasn't safe to dig, so we waited till the next day and dug it out. So we worked with those residents, bringing us some model water, but we have a lot of single points of failure in the system for people like that, that that, you know, if we have a large pipeline break, that we have a number of people out of service. So it's it's great that we have local contractors that we can work with to help us out with the equipment that we don't have, so.
As we move along, are are we upgrading various parts of the system? So that, you know, points where there are liable to be more fractures or incidents. As they are replaced, they're being replaced at a substantially better safety.
The biggest project, so we don't, we have a bit of a line replacement program. What we've actually been using it for in in recent years, seven here is actually more looping of the system, which we can, which helps us out because we do have a break. If we have a looped water system, then you can still provide service to customers. You just have to isolate the break area. So that's what we've been doing. We've had a couple of projects in Desert Hills where we've been working with some developers out there to loop the system. We worked with Miracle Bay County last year, actually, at a a lineup twentieth street north of Cloud Road, which helped us loop an area that had a single. There's a hundred and fifty customers. She only had one six inch line feeding the area, so if you had a break in that line, it'd all be out of service. Now we have a backup eight inch that feeds into the same area. Over the years, the town has actually gone into on Black Mountain. It's a great example. When the town bought the system. My understanding, the first number of years, we were spending a measurable amount of staff time almost weekly on Black Mountain, just repairing the lines. A lot of them were just two inch galvanized lines above the desert, sitting not above the ground because they didn't even trench them. So all of that has been replaced. We have one small section, eight hundred feet on Kahuna that I gotta get out of the system. I have a design for it. I'll hopefully get it out this year. But, you know, over the years, staff were actually able to replace most of that two inch with new six inch, mostly six inch lines, nicely bedded lines, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we switch over to our wastewater side of the system. This graphic is showing the flows that at the water ranch, we we typically measure. We actually have a good meter now to measure the raw incoming flow into the system. But we we use this as the effluent flows leaving the plant. This is the the treated effluent that's that's sent through the plant, and then we send this up to the Ranch Minion Golf Course. You can see the trends, twenty twenty is the blue, twenty twenty one is the red, and then the solid orange twenty is twenty twenty two. So on total, we are are we're trending down a little bit total for the years. We went from two hundred and ten acre feet in twenty twenty to two hundred and seven. Now we're at just over two hundred acre feet. But you can see at the end of twenty twenty two, we actually saw a little pop up in the amount of flow, but the total flow was a little bit less that year. The last few years have been anomaly. You know, the the blue line is really showing what happened to COVID. When people were had to stay in town, they didn't leave, and and we had a number of people in our wastewater flow stayed higher. We had more customers in the in the wastewater industry we saw, and then it dropped down quickly. So we've had some anomaly in our trends. I think twenty twenty two is more accurate what we'll we'll see moving forward, but we'll find out next year. But I do believe it's a better, more of a trending that we'll see moving forward. The the drop in ten acre feet is is kind of a little surprising, though, so. Right now, our effluent all get sent up to the Ranch Minion Golf Course. They have their three lake system. We deliver to the East Lake, and we deliver both affluent from our wastewater treatment plant and the backwash water are all C A P water to the East Lake. There's two pipelines. They they exit into the lake about ten feet apart, and then they cascade into the middle. And then the the West Lake is actually where the overflow for the golf course irrigation booster is, or the 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 golf course booster station is, and then the overflow that. The lake system, if we deliver more water, then they can use it overflows to the wash. So this is the twenty twenty two deliveries to Ranch Minion. On the bottom is our our treated F one, because right now, the only place we can put that treated F one is in in the into the call system. The red is actually the raw cap water or not the rock cap water is the the C A P divert water from Paul membrane system and reclaimed water from the the West Tech filters, the backwash water. So hopefully with the project we do this year, that red bar, we have some control over because we can reuse some of that debt cap, raw cap divert water and actually push it back into the pipeline to get beneficial use out of it. And then the the blue on top is when they've asked us for deliveries of over and above as per the contract. They get metered on the water they take out, but during the summertime, because of the the amount of water we deliver up there versus the amount of water they use, there's a huge disparity. And their lake system drops this year. I think it drops at least, I'd say, ten to twelve feet. So we had the lower lake was pretty empty. So we we have to send them some water. You'll see a July and August or August, September, sorry. We we supplemented very little. That was because we had some monsoon storms, so we did not send them that much, but then right go in October, and they get into overseeing operations, and they're using so much water so quickly, we can't keep up with them. So it's a dynamic system that definitely we need to to work with them on to make better for us, and the next slide will help show that. Because the imbalance between the contract is written that they only get billed for what they use and take off the lake, not for what we deliver to them. So the blue is showing that that the the total deliveries that we sent to them versus what we've built, been able to bill each month to them. You can see, say, August, when we had some really gun monsoon storms, we really can't, you know, we have to send them all the, we send them all the backwash water. It's either we send it to them or we send it down to the sewer plant, which then sends it up to them. So that's our system right now. So we have very little flexibility right now, and you can see the gaps that arise in the system. So what we term as non-revenue water, because we can't build them for that, was about a hundred and twenty four acre feet last year on the system. And this next slide sort of shows where the losses are coming from. We we think we have a good, and we calculate the pond evaporation because we actually have a a lake at Lake Pleasant, Miracle Bay County has an evaporation system, a pan evaporation system that we think we can use as a good calculation. We can, we have a meter on the overflow, so if the lakes do overflow, we actually do record that number. And then the difference between that is we assume is the lake leakage. So you can see evaporation just under forty acre feet. Overflow is last year about just under sixty acre feet. Years prior, that's gone up to about seventy five acre feet, so we're trying to manage that by sending them less water, which is the the how the it's really the waste, the water treatment plant, how it can operate, and a little less water that we had in the effluent system. And then the lake liner is about twenty seven acre feet is what our estimate is. So we definitely have to have a discussion with them as we move forward to help make this a more efficient system. But the fact that we can measure this and or calculate this and have that discussion with them about what we want to do moving forward. And the contract is in place, is is valid until twenty 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 forty nine without any amendments. So I don't think that's something we can deal with until that point, so.
I I disagree. I absolutely think that we need to look into this, and it's unconscionable that how this contract was arranged and agreed upon. But we need to make some changes, and sooner than later. I am not willing to wait until twenty forty nine.
Now, staff, we do not attend to. We want to have certain conversations with them, and then, you know, with the master plan, we can look out. You know, as we can make the the water treatment plant more efficient, that gives a little more control over it. But then we run into situations where, again, when they're in an overseen operation, we can't deliver water fast enough to them, and then during the summertime, we can't. But overall, in the year, the system is just not working in our favor, and we need to get a handle on it. That's the town's water resources.
Sean, the 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 contract has an absolute limit, if I remember correctly, of three hundred and thirty seven acre feet.
Three hundred and thirty acre feet, and and it's above that, they have to request, and it gets charged at double. The problem is that when they meter it on an annual basis, what because we meter it, what they use, it's typically around three hundred acre feet is what they take out of the lake system.
So that and that's my question, that 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 is not delivery, that's use.
Yeah, the contract reads that it's what they use. It's not what we deliver. So prior to twenty two thousand and nine, the subsequent agreements, there was actually a couple of different agreements got brought together, and it used to be metered as delivered. And then two thousand and nine, it got changed to what they consume.
But I I thought there was a provision in there. The town is not is not required to deliver any more than three hundred thirty five, three hundred and thirty seven acre feet. That's delivery.
But no, it's 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 their use. That's the contract says it's as used by them, so it's, yeah. I think we can have a good conversation with them, but it's it's going to be a hard conversation. We have to have it with them.
Well, there, I I've mentioned some other ideas. I believe I mentioned them too. There are other ways to skin this cap, I think. Yeah, it's got to be. I mean, if the one of the biggest problems this contract is there's no force majeure. They get the first drop of water. You know, if we run out of water, they're they're still using the golf course officially, so it is absolutely.
I know they've been trying to be better stewards of the water on the golf course, because if I look back over the usage of of the billings, they have decreased their usage. It's just, you know, it's the imbalance of our deliveries to the system is the problem, and is is there more things that we can do? Could we be recharging the water when they don't need it, so we get beneficial use out of it and then deliver them, say, ground or recovered water? So there's other ways we can look at at dealing with this on our side. And just to to say, then we limit them and say, we're only going to give you three thirty, but we're going to manage the excess on our side to make sure that we don't lose water resources.
I I can look in the future and say, at some point, this may be the top priority in town. If if we get cut back on our M and I water. This may become go from the bottom of the list to the top of the list in a big hurry.
Yeah, I've already worked with Michelle Van Queesen and had some discussions with her of how we can approach this, and we do need to have. Send a wrench man on a a letter outlining what our concerns are, and then having us just starting the meetings with them. It's not, you know, there's going to have to be some some sort of improvements made, either on their side of the system. We do believe against some inefficiencies on just the 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 lake system is an amenity for the golf course. Could they reduce the size of the lakes, which would which proportionally were reduced evaporation? We do think that there are some issues with the liner. This past summer, when it got so low, we were actually able to go in and do some observations and had a third party contractor. Looked at the lake. It's not our lake, but they did a report on it, and they said, yeah, there's some some concerns, and we shared that with Ranch Minion. Looked at the lake. It's not our lake, but they did a report on it and they said, yeah, there's some some concerns and we shared that with Rancho Minana.
I mentioned before, I I think one of the things we had to do is looking, taking grass out and and re-vegging it to 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 native vegetation. Doesn't require water. I mean, there there's just a lot of things I think we can do. I think we've got to define what happens in the case of the shortage. We need to, we've done some things over the year that are over and above the contract. We need to put a notice out that they're over and above the contract. We won't be able to. Deals in the future. There are just a lot of loose ends on this whole thing.
Yeah, agreed. So, you know, let's get the staff resources. We just need to make this a priority for us. Moving ahead into our regulatory side, the town does have backflow preventers. We manage a backflow prevention program. Right now, we have six hundred and forty six devices and these are the devices that help protect the system. Where there's concern that there could be a potential backflow and and water delivered to customers actually coming back into the system. That's how we define a backflow. So when you see compliance seventy one percent and the non-compliance thirty, so of the thirty percent twenty eight point eight on this slide. That's actually the customer should receive their first notice saying they have still sixty days to comply. So it's not that their devices that are are are. Not are failed. It's just the fact that we ask for an annual inspection. So trying to think of a better way to display this to council. But that's how the report gets generated out of the system. But so customers sometimes forget. So that's why we have the program. It reminds them to say you have sixty days to comply and and. On mass, people do comply in that timeframe. So it's just, we're gonna figure out a better way to display this to council. But I think the program is is good. It's just and the online vendor that we use B S I is actually a a very good third party to work with. And we have our pre-treatment program. I've mentioned this several times. So we're we're actually moving ahead. We're trying to make that more efficient. Sorry for the details on the slides. The text is way too small. So we've done a full inventory of both active and inactive. There's actually a few inactive because there's been restaurants and other usage in in the town. That actually have existing devices that are now a little longer in service. So we've gone out, done the inventory. We've got them mapped out. We won't even step further because the it's it's sometimes referred to the grease interceptor program. It's actually called the pre-treatment interceptor. It's it's removing anything that can be detrimental to either the collection system or the wastewater treatment plant. So it includes sand oil interceptors and grease traps, which are typically smaller. So we've got that full inventory and now with the new rates that we've set, we're actually charging everybody. Now, having this full inventory and doing the new rates, we're now charging the customers appropriately. We are doing introducing a new online program for this program called Swift Comply, which is another. Where allows the vendors to log in, upload the information. It's gonna reduce the amount of staff time involved. And then instead of us typically whenever started, we would have a staff member going out monthly to the interceptors and checking on them. It's gonna be more of, we're gonna just go out to the vendors and check on them, do more spot checks. And then they, but they're still providing us the manifest that the information's being done and they can upload things like pictures and stuff like that. So if we think we have a problem that we can actually go out and do more and more. It's the enforcement, but we'll go do more checking on it. And if it has to, we can go to enforcement on the on the program itself. So I think this is a good exercise to go through last year to get to this point. Mentioned before, but the the disconnects of the carefree system. Council manager direct sent out a note last week. So there has been a little bit of a change. So neighborhood A is the, I like to say the last area, but it's the largest area being changed out. So everything in neighborhood C, which is the area north of Cave Creek Road around the bend around Tom Darlington, that's all been converted. Neighborhood B is the area just south of there, running up into the Hawks Nest and Nighthawk neighborhoods. That's gonna be the last area to be converted. Carefree has to do a booster station upgrade so that they can provide the pressure pressures necessary to take that off. So their focus has been of recent is taking over neighborhood A, which is the area in order with of cave, carefree highway, which is the bulk of the water meters. And coming up this week, there'll be one large conversion. There were supposed to be two planned this week. It got deferred. So it'll be one this week and then one next week and that will take over probably two thirds of the meters in that neighborhood A will be converted. Then they will probably about three weeks later take over the, not the remainder of them, but a a large portion. Will come off in about three weeks and then they have to start working on crossing carefree road. There's three new pipelines that they need to construct to reach over to. Creek Canyon Road, there's the neighborhood that they have taken over there. So they're bringing a new eight inch line across. And then there's two others that are coming around the low C V S and historic west area. So there's a total of three crossings that they actually will come east, west across the road and allow them to take the rest of the customers over.
Sean, we've seen a lot of construction along carefree highways. They had a part of the change in water service.
Yes, a lot of it this past year, they spent a lot of time bringing a new sixteen inch pipeline across carefree highway from Tom Darlington over. Right now, they're working on the new interconnect site that they have with Scottsdale at Sixtieth Street on the south side of the road. So there's a new interconnect site over there that they're they're that allows them between that and the new reservoir site that they've built to feed into the area and get the proper pressures.
Well, I I'd like to thank you because I don't think we have to pay for that.
We don't, it's taking some staff time, but I'll I'll give credit to Carefree is is working with us. And and you know, they're they've they've helped us out and got us in a good situation, showed the disconnect locations. It's it's worked out in our favor. That we've we haven't been left with a bad situation yet. So. The most of the disconnects are happening in this next couple of weeks with actual physical construction in the system. The other ones up north were actually smaller or. More isolated disconnects where there's actually in this another southern area, neighborhood A, there's a total of ten disconnect locations being constructed. So and they're through a number of them, but they have to backfeed the system so they can get the proper pressure to their customers. But it's, I'll give credit, it's been a good working relationship with their staff and their contractor.
Sean, have you heard any numbers of what this, what the final number is gonna be and the cost of all these conversions?
I have not, you know, I've just been more focused on making sure that the the town is is kept in the best situation possible and working on that. So I I know Greg Crossman has his hands full and he's dealing with the construction costs over there.
There were, there were numbers floating around in the thirties. And I'm not sure whether that's true or not.
Greg and I have been keeping it very much in a professional level. We're just working on arrangements. He's got his contract to manage and I let him let him do that. So.
I have a question. In your opinion, will there be any discernible difference in their water quality?
I would say no, because you know, I think because we provide good quality water and you know, for the agreement, there's still an interconnect site between the systems. So it just got relocated from Tom Darlington to Bellevista Drive. So, you know, I I'd say no, you know. The our staff, I'll give credit to our staff have been doing a really good job. The improvements that have been made to the distribution system to also the treatment plant itself.
So really, the bottom line was control. They carefree wanted to control some water supply.
And they were allowed to do that per the intergovernmental agreement from day one. They 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 were allowed to do that and they elected to move forward with it. So you can't fault them for moving forward with that clause. Update on overall town water resources. So again, a lot of numbers on here and get feedback from council whether you like it or not. The the total delivered, the turnout, again, we earlier slide, it was just over two thousand acre feet. That's that's what we metered going to plant. The actual meter at the turnout as measured by the cap meter as they report to us is nineteen hundred and seventy five acre feet. So last year, that included some of the M and I water. Last year, we were able to start recharging. So we have seven hundred and seventy acre feet of now long-term storage resources. Which is a great benefit to the town. So we're, you know, by the time this this time next year, I believe we'll actually have close to fifteen hundred acre feet in the ground. So it'll be almost a full year's worth of water supply for the Cave Creek Water System, excluding Desert Hills customers and long-term storage credits. So it's.
Really a year's worth?
Yeah, because what's happening with the delay in the transfer of the municipal industrial water supplies, the arrangement we've had with with carefree is that since we're paying for the water right now. They're allowing us to, because it to to recharge all that, we're actually getting an additional three hundred plus acre feet on top of the five hundred. We'll be able to do annually. So by the end of the year, we'll have about fifteen hundred acre feet in long-term storage credits.
It's great. That is utterly amazing.
Now, I give credit to the staff again. Ryan Hill has just been, he's been on top of the C A P staff and getting this done for us. So.
And my colleague to the right.
Because it is, it is a huge account.
So and this is trying to show the the deliveries through the system. And what we did for recharge. So last year, the total deliveries were two thousand eight hundred and thirty one acre feet. But that included our recharge. So when we talk, this this is trying to attempt to show all the town's water resources. I'll point out, we've actually had some really good conversations. Ryan and I had a conversation with A D W R staff last week. There's been a lot of work. Especially since we're starting the utility master plan of this of accounting for certificates of your water supply, everything else in the town. So they've got now have a staff member assigned to us. We had a good meeting last week. So they're they've taken our numbers. It's taken them some time. They've they've admitted that they're short staffed and they're being swapped by development activity. But we're getting very close to a a number that we can agree on. It's getting closer in our favor as far as the accounting of the systems. And then the the end result also is make sure that we account for when the transfer, the municipal water rights get transferred to carefree. That that those certificates get put on their side of the 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 table also. But so it's it's a lot of good work. Again, you've got to my staff and then we're getting together. So we'll have a much better accounting as we move forward of all the certificates. And what we have available to manage. And then the master plan will help us point out where we think we need to grow and then where how far our resources will take us. And then we can factor in things like long-term shortages. You know, it's still a scary situation with the Colorado River right now for the town, especially since we. We have so much reliant on that supply for us. So but this this is a good step forward for us.
I I have a question. Since since Desert Hills still doesn't have the aquifer to support the water that's pumped out, what happens if their aquifer? Virtually gives us nothing. Do we have enough water to support?
Right now, yeah, typically we've been sending at least sixty percent. The worst case was up to seventy percent of their waters come from the Cave Creek system to that area. I'm trying to work with staff to better utilize the three wells that we do have out there. The one well at Joy Ranch and Third Avenue, the groundwater table actually has not been declining. We have reduced the pumpage from this from the reservoir, two hundred and twenty gallons a minute from the well, sorry. But it seems like it's not declining in that area, which is a good, good, good for us. The problem right now I see is is we still have the interconnect between the fact that that the largest production well out there, we can't just run all the time. Because it actually has, it has an arsenic blending programs. We have to send two hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty gallons of cap water to that site to blend with the water. Before we put it in the system, unless we have wellhead treatment out there. And that's something I'd be proposing in the capital program that we do that. Allow us to better manage that long term. It's it's a bit of a roll of the dice. How is the aquifer gonna respond? There's so many exempt wells in that area. It's hard to manage, but something we're looking at is is that one well, our largest production well, the groundwater table has been stable. Not so much the same as the other two, which are a little bit south of there, just mile, mile and a half south of there, that the groundwater is 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 has been more fluctuating. So the answer to the one question is, can we support them right now? We we could be able to support them, but then we'd have to have a hard discussion about. You know, if that happened more than a year or two, you know, would we have to start looking at how we grow in the system overall, both. So that's why we monitor it so closely, the well production and what water we're sending to them and their your usage as customers. And I think that was why it was so important that the town council allowed us to move forward with the twenty twenty one water resources policy. And then the subsequent changes to town code, which allowed us to restrict new service connections out in desert hills unless there's a contractual obligation and some other things. There still are two developments that had certificates that are on our books in desert hills that can develop. One's fifty four lots, fifty one lots, the other seventy four lots. So they may have to come forward and they actually have a certificate. There's no way that can stop them at this point. But just work within, working with the developers, the only thing I can do to help them reduce their water demands on the system.
I I know we have some areas that at some point will get developed. I think Luke mentioned there were three areas west of. West of Forty Eighth Street and kind of north. We wouldn't be able to develop that unless we find some more water, right?
If you're referring to the state land developments that occurred, yeah, I think that the pre-annexation agreements in those cases, if I remember correctly, they state that. Way it was word is, the the town probably will not have water resources to allow development occur. So any development does occur. You don't have a a underlying zoning, we have to bring new water resources to the town to to treat and deliver to them. They would be required to be part of our water system, but they have to bring the water resources for us to deliver to them. So that'll have to move forward and you know, when that, when state land auctions that off, that'll have to be a discussion to be made. So the master plan will help us map that out too, as as you know, the existing customers versus shortages versus growth outside of those areas.
Well, what I'm particularly concerned about when you talk about the total numbers is if we do have to, in the short term, the next year to take more cap hits. Want to make sure that that we can take care of the customers we already have before we prioritize other stuff.
Yeah, that's something that again, staff, we look at very closely and try to forecast out and we're we're, we keep abreast of the discussions with C A P shortages. Yeah, it's, you know, it was, it was a hard pill to swallow that we just had got the new subcontract for the non-needing agricultural water that we purchased. On behalf of the Desert Hill system to only have the 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 first year we placed the order, there was a shortage on, we couldn't place all of it. So.
I think that was an accident. The timing is just too coincidental.
They were two separate tracks. This happened to hit at the same time. And yeah, again, the Desert Hills customers are are we're paying for that water. And that was put into the rate model because that that is this surface water right that they never had. And that was helping to separate out the systems. It's just with the volatility on the C A P canal or twenty four years into a drought situation. So, you know, there's some serious discussions to have and that's why it's perfect timing for us to do the master plan. Yes, we can have those discussions and map that out. Come to council and talk, talk through these issues.
It's very fortunate that this year, there's been a lot of snowfall in the Rockies. That's going to help us out, I think, in the short term. But interestingly, with with global warming, the excess or the greater than average snowfall in the Rockies. Is not panning out to the same amount of increase in the river. So, you know, hopefully that snowfall will continue and this this snowfall year will continue to the point that it reduces. Or it maybe at some point eliminates this twenty year, twenty three year drought.
Yeah, there's a lot of smart, a lot more, a lot of people, a lot smarter than me who are looking at this as a full-time job, trying to evaluate this. And between that and the water race discussions that are going on between the basin states. You know, there's, there's a lot of activity right now. So it's obviously we're keyed into it. We're a small proportion of that in our C A P water rates, but it's 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 critical to the town. So that's why we need to keep abreast of it. You know, obviously in proportionality, we were, we're a small little bucket in comparison to everybody else's, but it's a very important bucket.
Speaking of which, tomorrow night is the meet and greet with the new general manager of C A P. I'm not sure how many of us are going. That would be interesting if we could.
You know, I've been yammering on here for a while, so we'll try and wrap up here. But there's always, I always feel bad at this because every one of my work groups, I'll give credit to them. They 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 do amazing jobs and and everything out there. This happens to be some work that was actually being done with the the interconnects. And this is actually some of the physical work that's being done. So Carefree has a contractor, Aiken Gardner is doing most of the work. And this is an example of a disconnect and some caps and and the separation of the system, the physical separation. We start off by doing, creating air gaps in the system. And then we get to the point where we're physically capping stuff.
And the picture on the right is the the disconnect between the two systems.
In that case, that was actually a a cleanup right at, yeah, they they physically, they capped our line. So actually, that's actually our line on either side. They actually capped it back further than they needed to to help us out. So we didn't have a long dead end line. So and that, that's how they cap.
But that is a physical separation between Cave Creek and Carefree, is that?
In this case, the 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 white picture there is actually, that's that's just a break that they put into our Cave Creek system. So that the separation is actually occurring about five hundred feet away from this location. They cap, they came back and worked with us and put this cap in close to our location. So we didn't have a five hundred foot dead end line. So what, you know, what is a, it's a bracing cap between both sides of it, the pipes separated, the 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 caps themselves are actually anchored back to the. To it and you're seeing it before they priced the the concrete kicker block around that entire assembly. So it's not gonna move again.
To me, it looks like it's joined by a safety pin.
There, there's a big much, what you're not seeing is the bags of concrete that went on top of that. So. There, there's a big, what you're not seeing is the bags of concrete that went on top of that. So. But again, in this case, that was them actually helping us out by, by not having a, a long dead end line and capping it close to, closer to the location that we, you better served us. Uh, you know, our staff work together. So one example is at the water ranch, uh, our wastewater facility. The, the distribution staff found the six-inch line. Uh, we had a bunch of above-ground piping that over the years, the, the original buried piping broke. So the staff had placed a bunch of above-ground piping to feed the chemical in the order scrubber area. That became an issue because it was actually holding back water. It was, it's doing all kinds of things and, and the lines are breaking. So the distribution staff went in and tapped the new line to come back out to help the crew out. So, you know, we try to work together whenever we can. And that's a, a good, uh, solution to what was considered a temporary solution that we'd done many years ago. And at the wastewater plant, uh, some of the, some of the big improvements, we've had headworks. I think that's the next slide I have. But, uh, we're continuing to work on the aeration system. So the, uh, the treatment basins themselves, after we take out the large material. And, and the headworks building, uh, go into the two SBR sequence batch reactor basins. Though probably the most critical aspect of that is the aeration system. We're actually putting, uh, bubbles in. They're actually supposed to be micro bubbles that actually both mix the solution and actually add air for the treatment to work. You can see on the top, the old diffusers are, were largely clogged up and non-functional. So the new diffusers going in. So we have a diver that's been diving crew that's been working on that. They're making great headway and they're finding some other issues with some of the piping. I give all the credit to them. They're doing this while the basins are live, um, and not being able to see anything down there. They're actually doing all by feel. So between the two basins, we have two thousand six hundred aeration heads. Uh, they've gone through about a thousand so far. All right. I think the eight hundred is what we're up to right now. So they're working their way through it and staff are already noticing an improvement in the, uh, the quality of the wastewater treatment for the basins. We've always, uh, they've always produced, the plant itself has produced good high-quality water, but this is actually meaning these basins are running more efficiently. Which actually then takes less burden off our, our disfilters and our chlorine contact base downstream. So this was, uh, uh, well-needed improvement. Basically the old diffusers had, uh, ran their useful life. So. And then I mentioned the headworks. So, uh, last time I talked, we actually had the new bar screen installed, which removes material down to a quarter inch, uh, material. And then on top of that, we have a grit classifier. So heavier materials, there's sands and other things, even coffee grinds get into the collection system. Those are things that, uh, we can't really treat in the process. So we use this, uh, a blowground centrifuge chip of assembly that to then draw that out. What had broken was the classifier unit, which actually then takes that slurry and then compacts it and then pushes it into a compactor. So that, that was, uh, in, uh, the assembly was just done just before Christmas. So, so we have our headworks back in order. And we've been doing a lot of work on our wastewater collection system. Some people might've noticed that, uh, last week, uh, we had a contractor got available. So we, we jumped on it and we caused a little bit of a, of a headache for traffic, but we apologize for that. But the sewer line on Cape Creek Road was overdue for cleaning and we actually both got some videoing done. Uh, that was just last week, but before Christmas, we were able to get in and do, uh, like Black Mountain Crossing you're seeing here. And we actually found a complete blockage of one of our lines. There was a root intrusion coming into it. So, uh, it was causing a complete backup, uh, as you can see on the, where the star is on the, on the right-hand side, uh, that entire line was, was backed up. There was, it was very little flow coming back through, but after we did it, they, they, they were able to clean it out quite effectively. And we did most of that actually surprisingly from the south side of the wash, Galway wash. They were able to get up there with both the jetter and the camera. So I give credit to the, the, the crew, the, the new vendor that we have out there is doing a great job to help us out.
Is, is that something we'll have to do on an ongoing basis because of the roots that are in there with a?
We're going to watch this location. But that's one of the reasons we do the video inspections. We set ourselves a goal of, of trying to clean the entire system, uh, fifty percent of this, of it every year. Uh, we're actually getting a little head because we, we've, uh, we're going to more than meet that this year because we, we, we're, we were backlogged. So we're getting through a lot of stuff and try to video every five years. So that really the only way you can find problems, the collection system is to video it. Um, and, uh, but it's, it takes a lot of time to go through it, but, uh, that'll give us our baseline. So now we can go back in here in a few years. In this case, we'll probably go in next year and, and see what's going on. The root was coming from an adjacent landowner or property owner's lateral. Uh, we actually worked with them and they brought a plumber out that day and they cut their lateral cleaned out. That's where we found the root. So it was coming into the main. So.
Sean, that area has a history, will actually up on the, under Cave Creek Road has a history of odor complaints. And when we were at, uh, Stagecoach Village a couple of weeks ago, uh, they said that they had found some, uh, piping errors on their property. Where they, uh, they've put in just plain PVC pipe from Home Depot. And the wrong size PVC pipe and dirt had packed it up. And, uh, so there are a lot of odors coming out there and they fixed that. Have you noticed any decrease in odors up there around mountainside in the, in the San Suse restaurant?
So, uh, for two issues, cause in Stagecoach Pass, Station Village itself, we've actually worked very closely with their HOA board. And we've done, uh, a couple of cleanings through that area and, and, uh, evaluations of that area. So I think the main line is in good shape. What we pointed out to them is I think underneath their building slabs and their common HOA community, they, they have some issues under slab.
This was their, this was their problem, not ours.
Yeah. Problem is sometimes they jet it into our system. So it ends up our problem. So it's something we've got to watch for. Uh, but Sansui, that one's been causing us, we've actually cleaned that last week again. We've got a new video of it and we're perplexed. Um, we're going to bring an outside vendor in. We have a vendor that works at the wastewater, uh, treatment plant, the water ranch to do, um, monitoring of the, uh, the odor scrubbers. We're going to have them do some logging of that area and also an area on Carefree Highway to find out what's going on. Something, something's odd up there. Cause the lines were, you know, they needed a cleaning, but they weren't as dirty as what we were smelling and observing and odors. And we actually have been on Mountain View Pub's side and actually videoed their lines, looked at them and they're all clean. And there's no issues, there's no bellies or anything. So we can't figure out what, what happened and what is happening up there. So we need to work on that. I think one of the issues we're concerned about is San Suis lateral, it goes about three hundred and fifty feet off property. And we're not exactly sure where it goes, cause we can't find any clean outs on it. So we may actually have to cut into and find it and cut it. So we can inspect it. We've inspected in front of their building. It was clean. So we, there's something going on else up there that we just can't put our finger on. So I think we're going to have to, we have to use an outside resource to help us figure out what's going on to get the best solution for town. Cause you know, we did a bunch of improvements on the downstream sewer, uh, last year and it seems like the odors got so much better. And the downstream problems have not come back. It's just up at the top by Mountain View Pub and Sansui. And just, we can't seem to figure out what's going on up there. So it's been frustrating for staff. In addition to cleaning, we've been noticing some problems that we need to deal with on the wastewater side. So, uh, we have it in the capital program to do both manhole rehab and actually, uh, line repairs. We found actually a line down Fifty-third Avenue and that's what the picture on the left is, is actually it's a ductile iron pipe. The, the, on Fifty-third Avenue is fairly shallow, shallow buried. It's only about three feet to cover. So they used ductile iron. The problem is the ductile iron has a ceramic epoxy, they call it protecto four oh one, uh, but it's failing. Uh, so effectively it's, it's falling in and what we found is actually it'd fallen into the point that there was three fairly large blockages in that line. And we believe that was contributing to some odor problems that the staff were observing on Carefree Highway. So we jitted that out. But as we continued to jet the line, more of the liner came off. So we were, the solution is that we actually have to do what's called a slip liner. So we'll do an aggressive clean through it and actually put a new plastic felt liner through the line. Um, there are overseas two other locations, one coming out of, uh, the Walmart where they did ductile iron pipe. We're, we're observing quite the level of detail, our, uh, deterioration, but we figured we might as well get it done. And then when the line ties in and Carefree Highway, the eight-inch that ties into the twelve-inch, that's actually got some problems too. So it's right in the middle of the intersection. So we've currently are working with a vendor to come up with cost estimates on this. We have a, a contract with, uh, BNF Construction, uh, council authorized that expenditure with them to do sewer re-repair. So they're looking at this. Uh, a project on Ranch and Minjana Boulevard and a, a crossing of Underwood Hills Wash. So they're looking at all three projects for us. So we'll see what we can get done with this year's budget. And then July first, we have the new monies coming and hopefully we can get all three of those projects done, uh, by the fall and be out of the system. And then just a little side project that, you know, again, our staff actually are working and we bring contractors in to do stuff. This is an example of we're, you know, not only helping ourselves out, uh, to different groups. But at the water treatment plant, the maintenance group, uh, you know, we had a problem with the, the, um, uh, drain line, uh, in the sledge tank, uh, that decants. The sledge goes into that tank and then we actually removed that, uh, two to three times a year, we actually removed the sledge, but we decant the water off. That goes down to our sewer system. The, the lines got blocked, uh, so the staff went in, we're able to do a project and get that functionally working. So again, a good example of, uh, we can do a lot and house our staff right now. You know, we, we have had some decrease in staff and the fact that we've had some people leave the town, go to other jurisdictions. We're all sort of in a, in a boat where we're sort of pilfering from each other right now in the industry. Especially in the Miracle Bay County area. Yeah, everybody's, uh, trying to steal everybody else. We get someone trained and then they suddenly they can make, you know, money somewhere else. Or, uh, they can get more career advancement. So we've, we're in a little bit of a, of a heartache right now with trying to deal with staffing. But the staff that we do have, I give credit to them. They're, they're trying to be proactive and keep things working and, and we're, we're still making headway. We're not going backwards, which is the biggest takeaway. And I'll end off, you know, we have other CIP projects, uh, but the biggest one is obviously the city of Phoenix interconnect site. So this is the latest rendering of that site. Uh, from Black and Beach, you're seeing the large reservoir on the, uh, the, the northeast core, northwest core of the site. It's hard to see, but there's a landscape berm being planned along the, uh, uh, western side of the site. That'll be, uh, both elevated berm as well as landscaping material onto it to, to shield the site. The, the equipment area, this, or the hatched in area is largely fenced in. So it's have an eight-foot security fence around it. So you won't really see much except the, the tops of the buildings. Uh, and there's, you know, there's a fairly wide, large wash that runs across the top side of the sites. We're, we're channelizing that. And then there's going to be the onsite retention basin. So, uh, there's, there's, there's not much left over from our three acre site. Once this project is done, between getting this, uh, reservoir, the dual-zone booster pump station, we have to have the turnaround area. So we can bring chemicals, the chemicals being chlorine. That's the only thing we're, we're planning to use of the sites. We can actually add additional chlorine, uh, to the Phoenix water. Before it goes back into our system, make sure it's properly disinfected. It'll be coming in as treated water, but, uh, because of the water age, uh, we expect a lot to, 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 um, top it up. As best analogy, and then we're also leaving space. We can relocate the CAP, uh, number four booster station, which is in the vault in front of Lowe's right now to this site. Uh, so that it's just down gradient. So we can bring it up to this site and with addition, it's not showing on here is a small reservoir. The, the large reservoir is about a million gallons of storage, uh, but doing a smaller reservoir about a hundred thousand gallons, which should allow us to better, uh, control the flow up to the treatment plant. And better utilize the paw membranes, which then will also help us in turn, um, produce less backwash water from that plant, which, which will help us better control our deliveries to Ranch and Minjana. So it all, it all ties together. So at this point, we have, uh, we've gone through a selection process and we have, um. Uh, talked to, uh, the, the committee has, has elected to move forward with a contract of, of MGC. We still have to bring that contract to council. So we're working with, uh, MGC on the contract to work with Bill Sims to get that contract put together. We've, uh, finished our application to the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. Uh, we are already seeing, you know, there's some concerns about the cost of the site and we're actually having those meetings, uh, with MGC right now while we're negotiating their scope of work. And we'll probably be coming back to council or we will be coming back to council to, last year we asked for, um, uh, council authorization to, to make the wood application for nine point four million dollars. Uh, we've talked to the town's bond council and the suggestion is to ask for all the capacity that we could in the current, uh, and it was built into the rate model. So it'll be thirteen million dollars is what the application to WIF is right now. Our goal is to be under that with the project and we're asking for that because we actually can get some debt forgiveness, um, and some other things on it. Uh, but we're going to be coming back to council next month with a resolution to reauthorize that, uh, to match with the loan document that's moving ahead with WIF at this point. The, the numbers we're hearing from Black and Beach and more so from MGC is, yeah, right now with the construction costs as they are. Uh, we, we might have to look at reducing the scope of work, uh, but yeah, it is getting to be more expensive project than we anticipated just because we're hitting, we're still in the escalation phase of the market right now. But we're going to try and, or we will bring it in, uh, within a more reasonable budget at this point. But as one of, uh, for Warren Council, we, we'll be coming back with a resolution asking for additional authority. And then again, that was, we're using all the authority that was put into the rate model, uh, for both the interconnect site. And we're actually moving forward, the, the authority that was placed in there to pay for the treatment plant expansion was supposed to happen, uh, the following year. Um, so we'll bring that all forward to make sure that we can complete this project. With that, I can answer any questions. You know, I've talked a lot here and I apologize when I do this, there's just so much stuff and I'll give so much credit, credit to the staff. And you know, even the internal staff that we work with, with finance and the building staff, you know, uh, our engineering staff, all the work staff and everybody. So it's a, you know, these are big utilities. Big enterprise funds for the town. And I think we've got a, a, a good people who are well committed to, to moving us forward.
Including yourself, Sean. You do a really excellent job and we appreciate it.
Yeah, I think you. Somebody else want to say?
Just to say thank you.
Sean, I, I, I've been with the water for ten years, started six years on the water advisory committee. And the five years you've been here, there's been just an absolutely amazing amount of progress in the system that will never be cheap. Never. But, uh, I mean, just these, uh, these sewer slides just bring chills to my, my body. To think they were in there all the time and that, we didn't know what was going on. So congratulations, you've done fine work.
Yeah, that, uh, give credit to my staff for sticking it out and getting through that stuff and cleaning it and finding it. And you know, it's one of those things, it's like you don't want to know about it, but.
Anything else from staff? Anything else? Thank you very much. Motion adjourned.
We have public comment.
Oh, David, I'm sorry. I'm forgetting again. I'm new in my job. I'm still trying to get this down. Thank you. Okay, a motion, I had a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?